Okay, so first off, I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. It's very important that you participate in your city government. It is never a waste of time to be here, find out what's going on, and help influence the direction of Alpine. It's always a good use of time to come to these meetings. Your involvement in the running and management of our city does make a positive difference. So we are thankful that you're here and hope to see you here in the future. I do want to remind everyone, especially since we are a large crowd this evening, that this is a regular city council meeting, and the rules of decorum are in place and will be strictly enforced, especially because we're large. And so what that means is politeness and courteousness are expected of everyone here this evening. Rudeness, booing, hissing will not be tolerated. Please turn off your cell phones and put them away at this time. The use of phones is prohibited except for purposes explicitly authorized by state law, Texas Government Code 551.023. If you do need to use your phone, please be courteous and step outside. As I mentioned, we are a large crowd. So I also want to remind you to refrain from any conversations during the meeting or any talking during any portion or hollering out. If you have a comment to make, please raise your hand. And if we are at an appropriate place in the meeting, council may allow you to come to the podium, time permitting. We have a lot to cover this evening. Of course, if you build out a comment card, speak on an agenda item during the three-minute comment section, we will call you to the podium. Keep in mind, council is not allowed to engage in discussion with you during your three-minute comment period. All we can do is listen, and you will be limited to that three minutes. Public. So acceptable during the public hearing section. Once again, during that section, council is not allowed to discuss, enter into discussion with you. It is important that you speak from the podium for the official record of this meeting and for those on Zoom. When you come to the podium, please clearly state your first and last name and your ward number. If you don't have the opportunity to make your voice heard this evening, please email me or your council member or both of us with your thoughts. Email addresses can be found on the city website. So with that, I call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledges.
Everybody ready?
Sir.
Mayor, council, it's my pleasure to give you all a presentation on the state law and the City of Alpine rules and procedures for replats rezoning and the processes used to do those things. This is important tonight for the discussion regarding the proposed proposal to approve the replat at 1911 North State Highway 118 here in Alpine. The property, I think everybody knows where it is. It's out on the way toward my office. It's next to the Alpine. The legal requirements for this type of annexation were met. The property had. Of county in the city. The city had received a written annexation request by the owner. The city held two public hearings on this. These were council meetings that were published as council notices. And the second notice appearing for the specific public hearing on the annexation request was published in the newspaper. And the owners had to agree to a service plan for water, wastewater, gas, safe street access, and agreed to follow all the city rules. You know, getting a permit, you know. To make sure the rules are followed. And more important to the city, as we struggle with our budget, is we're going to get sales and property tax revenues from this property. If it stayed in the county, we wouldn't have received one of those. We have an additional municipal gas customer. And remember that had the city not annexed the property, then the property would have been eligible to go ahead and be built as a commercial property in the same place for the same purpose, with no city oversight, no city taxes, and no city sales tax revenue. So, next slide, please.
She has 20 people next door that cannot hear.
Gio just, I'm sorry, Abel just took another speaker over there. If we want to take a five.
Okay, let's take a five-minute.
I'll try to speak up, maybe I can. Not trying to hide from anybody.
Rod, when we begin again, just kind of summarize what you said for those who didn't hear. For the people next door.
This doesn't have audio, doesn't have audio yet. I'll try to speak up and see if people can hear me. But they do, they can't see the presentation. I understand. We're doing the best we can for a large crowd. Any audio yet? Any audio yet? Okay, I saw a thumbs up. So I think our good neighbors next door might be able to hear me. And I'll go back through, hopefully not more of y'all. Go back through the presentation. If you go back into slide two. Okay.
Make sure that we do have sound.
Yeah, testing one, two, three. Could y'all hear the audio in the civic center room? Can y'all hear the audio well in the civic center room? Testing to see if you can hear the audio in the civic center portion of City Hall. Testing one, two, three. Testing one, two, three. Can y'all hear me well? Testing in the. Testing one, two, three in the civic center portion of City Hall.
Can we have a 30-minute recess to most of the meetings?
Yes, absolutely.
We're gonna take a 30-minute recess and move everybody.
Thank you.
There's a lot of chairs. The occupancy is 5:07.
Motion of Representative Stand Up after Ron.
Yeah, we're going next door. I don't know. I'm just glad Michelle can be able to see out here.
Oh, no, you're not moved. Me neither. Me and Tom are gonna sit in here. I'd like to be over there. You'll be fine. You'll be fine. It'll be fun.
What are you here for, doesn't it see if it passes?
No, no. Aren't you giving those?
I don't think we're doing the road horse.
All my interactions.
I'm just trying to take out. I thought it was, I thought it was Heather and. It's Animal Service and Visitor Center. Let me see what I think. Oh, you're on information discussion. Those are quartered, of course. We better ask see what.
If they don't, I can't do it like that.
Bring your own chair. No.
I'm fine with the others. Oh, yeah. I'm fine with the others. You want to meet your chair?
Do we set up just regular chairs for?
Are they concerned when you move around? Yes, please. So it works? She was on it. I don't know why. So would you send everybody in there? Start a break.
I don't know, it was working earlier. So, you know, get in.
No, I'll just plug it into this one.
We might. Don't you know where it is?
Thank you. I know, right? Okay, thank you. I know. We'll put another table up for you. Unless you want to fit in with one of them. Where do we want to put? Okay, that sounds good. Pretty good. This screen, we turned it off. We don't really need it now. You're right.
Does anybody hear me? Everybody in the room can I hear? All right, somebody.
Hi, council.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank everybody over the good citizens here in Alpine for your patience. We try to convince you to make sure everybody can hear and understand that proceedings here in Alpine City Council tonight. The Alpine City Attorney, I prepared this slide presentation to try to explain to the public and to the council the processes the city has used on the two steps involved in this project. Then there's two parts to this. One is an annexation. And the second part, which is on the agility part, approval of a replat. And there's been some confusion with the comments. We think one language applies to the other, etc. On explaining all to your understanding processes the city uses. The property owner originally came to the City of Alpine requesting annexation of their property. Property that they requested annexation is an island in the City of Alpine. It's surrounded by a city of Alpine, but it is counted. Alpine has no close tracks like this, and this is just the best neighborhood in the whole land. And you can't really be fixed with the normal, because state law has changed. We have to just learn the new rule. And we're happy when people seek to come into the city because it helps to solidify the city boundaries and help to. Let people that are receiving city services pay for their taxes and sales back. So the property owner came to the city and requested annexation. And we annexed that under chapter 43, subchapter C3 of the Texas Local Government Code. Legal requirements for this type of annexation are the following. The property has to be contiguous to the municipal boundary. In this case, the property was surrounded on all four sides of the City of Alpine. Except for one side has Alpine all the land, which is second land in the county. All the streets and everything else around here is in the city. The city received a written annexation request by the owner. The. The city received a written annexation request by the owner. The city held two public hearings. These were council meetings. These were newly noted as council meetings with annexation requests. The second notice appearing for the specific annexation item was published in the newspaper. The owner agreed to draft and approve a service plan to use city services, water, wastewater, gas, safe street access. And all of these are the requirements under the state law. All under about as little as Alpine uses to annex property. The annexation was not required. And you have to understand that had annexation not occurred, this property would have remained in the county and the owner could continue the development within the county in the exact same spot, in the exact same store, except it wouldn't be under city oversight, wouldn't be under city building codes. And the city wouldn't receive any benefit from city taxes, property taxes, sales taxes. When a retail establishment is annexed within the city limits, the building codes do apply. And they should ensure that the construction is according to national building codes, which Alpine has adopted. The property annexation followed the required process. The original annexation under ordinance code specified the property is to be zoned commercial, retail. And I recall when this was happening, I need to talk about the fact that this property was being rezoned and annexed with the purpose of rez迚. Wasn't any secret. The timeline for the two public hearings and the proper notice of the secretary of the newspaper were followed by the city. The owner submitted a service plan, drafted, submitted, and approved. The Texas Local Government Code chapter forty-three regarding annexation has been requirement for letters to the city nearby tenant. And public hearings are required, and those are the council meetings. The newspaper notices on the citizens of the annexation plan. So, annexation then was adopted and approved by this Alpine City Council board. Once it was annexed, it was annexed in as a commercial property, known as a commercial property. So the issue before the council tonight is a replat. What's a replat? A replat is what the original drawings were for the property. The property was originally developed. And this lot originally had, maybe twelve lots. Alpine auto lands may have a couple of the lots. Rest of them are still in the lot, but the city codes require that you're not supposed to build across lots. If you're gonna build a bigger building than on the lot, you should cross the replat. That's what the property owner has done. But remember that for the replat, the property itself was already zoned commercial through the original annexation. The replat was submitted to planning and zoning. And all applicable notices and laws were followed. The open meeting public notices to the city, from the city, and the letters to the adjacent nearby property owners were sent regarding the replat process to the owner's owners. The next slide. The purpose of the planning and zoning was to make sure city and state laws follow. As the property was already zoned commercial upon annexation, the sole purpose of planning and zoning review was to make sure the submitted plan and service plans follow the city and state regulations. And I think this is where the confusion is coming from, right? People thought, well, somehow it goes to planning and zoning. And we don't like it, we can go tell them not to approve it. Well, no. Single word, no. State law, and as recently as this year, the Texas Supreme Court ruled that that's not the powers of planning and zoning, and that's not the powers of the city council regarding replat. Replat is only to make sure that rules are gonna be followed regarding the health. And you're gonna follow the regulations for water, sewer, streets, setback, hay, all that kind of stuff. And if they do, the local government code, right here, I'll leave it to you all, section two twelve point zero zero five. The municipal authority, in this case, the city of Alpine, responsible for approving plats, must approve a plat or a replat that is required to be prepared under the subject and that satisfies all applicable regulations. Well, what is all applicable regulation? The regulations mean what I told you before, which is are you gonna conform to building codes? And you conform setback requirements, you're gonna pay the parking lot, you're gonna have drainage, you're gonna do the other plans that the building codes and the city of Alpine require to be implemented. If you are gonna comply with that, maybe the planning and zoning of the city council has authority to deny the replat. If the plat is conforming, the Texas Supreme Court has made clear that municipal approval on the Texas Local Government Code, section two twelve point zero zero five, is a required ministerial duty for the city. And this is a case of the Texas Supreme Court this year. The planning process is intended to be an expeditions one in favors of proof. The legislature created the ministerial duty to approve a conforming plat. If no resupplied, you're to deny a non-conforming. In this case, the plat is not non-conforming, the plat is conforming. The plat will conform to our applicable city of Alpine requirements for building commercial buildings on that lot. So the council today, my legal advice to the council today is that they have a ministerial duty to approve the replat. And then it will be illegal not to approve it, because of the Texas Supreme Court decision that says what I just read, and that we all have a duty to follow the law through the Texas. And the final comment is what I made at the beginning of the process, which is that, remember that it's sort of a distinction about a difference, because if the city had moved on through this process to require them to comply with city codes and regulations, the project would have gone forward in the county. And if it went forward in the county, there would have been no regulation, no oversight, no building official, no code official, nobody would make sure everything's done for the city's standards. So, but developer voluntarily coming into the city against the city's oversight, to follow tax revenue and property taxes, and sales taxes, we can approve this. That's where we stand on the law regarding replats. And that's what people in council have remembered, the property has already been had in this city now. So you're not gonna choose not to have it. I'm sorry, council, I kept remembering these specific things I said. I'll stand by what I say tonight, we wanted to process the conversation. Well, there was no legal reason not to annex.
No, no, but somebody asked, you told us that as long as the property owner was requesting to be annexed, there had no no choice. By law, you have to annex as long as there are
once again, I don't recall saying that specifically back to the line what I've just told you in the council the public hearings regarding annexation process.
So how people about find out what information is given to council at the annexation? Because like I said, my vote would have been different if I'd not been under consideration.
That's what you know that Tony Bennett, the council president, is calling his, the city secretary.
There was some dissenting vote, but I'm trying to tell you that my vote would have been different if I had not been given information from you, that we had to approve it.
I don't recall saying that specifically, that's what I'm doing.
So can you tell me what the topic is? Should I go back and find that that was the advice you gave us? What is it that can be done to go along?
You wanna, you want this annexed, this property?
I wanted to know that I voted on something. I was given the right information.
It's always been my obligation to give all the best of my information, everything I have to.
And I'm sure that was your attention, but I
I don't call it different, council, but we can go back and look at it.
I would like to ask, there was, there seemed to be a question on whether the boundaries of the property question. Where actually
The property, well, the boundaries of property question are gonna be noted in the plat or survey that is submitted to the city at the final annexation. No, I didn't have that in my present. I was just going off of my memory.
Just, yeah, I think I saw whether grants are exclusive, no they are not.
It has to be basically, it could be approved by the mayor, subject to appeal by the city council, per the ordinance. So if the mayor would like to allow it, we can go ahead and allow it, subject to appeal by the city council.
To be accurate, I should say that the plat was approved according to the survey plat that was submitted by the owner at the time of the submission for annexation. Whatever that plat says is whatever it says.
Can I finish my question? Yes. It is not surrounded by a city property. Next slide, fourth street, that June is county property, that's not part of the city. Can't forget, Highway two, Highway one eight two is county property. Until the second. Okay, that whole back side is not city property. It's not part of, it's not part of the city. It is part of the property. We know, why don't we have time for our city break the water? All right, councilor, I wanted to ask, instead of it was purchased by Dollar General, it's in the council, is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Dollar General is gonna come regardless, whether we annex it or not, is that correct?
Dollar General could have come regardless of what we do.
All right, and if we had not annexed it, we wouldn't have followed any of our building codes. So we would have received no money, no property taxes, no sales taxes.
That's correct.
So it could have come regardless of what the council voted to.
That's correct. Just like building anything in the county.
All right, so a situation such as this, by annexing it, we did the best we could to give them the property tax, sales tax, and the building codes.
In my opinion, yes. And remember that we had this discussion at the time of the annexation, and we had about some other properties, because the Texas law has changed regarding annexation. And the city cannot involuntarily annex properties anymore. We can only annex properties that were requested by the owner to be annexed. And so it's, to me, it's wonderful for the city for somebody to request to come in, because that's gonna bring us more benefit. These islands in the county are taking advantage of the city, because they're really getting city services. This would block as high streets all the way around it, city water, I mean, they won't have times, but but they're really getting the benefit of them considering not having to pay city taxes.
Okay, let me ask one more question. If it were legal for us to de-annex, we did, Dollar General placed
I can't speak for them, but I can tell you that they could come.
All right, the other discussion. I would like to make a motion that we have the Dollar General representative come up and speak. All right, make a motion, council. We have the Dollar General representative come up and speak on the motion. I need a second. You vote all the way through your end.
I understand that there might be there might be some concerns about the building code and the lighting on the building. They're going to follow the city of Alpine's codes. And been authorized to give you votes, the Dollar General representative, those are the amendments and stories, in case, you know, who's on the council, you can contact them. I'm sorry. That they can contact Dollar General directly with the management board. I'm gonna give you that as for their guidance. I'm sorry. For all facilities to contact information, so you can contact Dollar General on the record. I've got his name and number.
Little man, you in contact, okay?
Yes.
Got drives everywhere, all around.
Yes.
It's Gary D. Knight, that's K N I G H T. Director of Store Facilities Maintenance, Dollar General Corporation. One hundred Mission Ridge. Goodletsville, Tennessee, that's G O O D L E T T S V I L L E. Tennessee, three seven zero seven two. His office number is six one five eight five five four six five eight. His fax number is six one five eight five five four six five eight. Gary D. Knight, that's K N I G H T. Director of Store Facilities Maintenance. That's the Dollar General Corporation. One zero zero Mission Ridge. Goodletsville, that's G O O D L E T T S V I L L E. Tennessee, three seven zero seven seven two. And his office is six one five eight five five four six five eight. And his fax is six one five eight five five four six five eight. That there, there yourself? I will, I will, I will inform that. Yes, you'd be in charge of all of those. My name is Philip Cornett. On the land survey, that surveyed the property. No, I live in this Texas.
First up, we have Karen Cantrell, Ward one. She is commenting on Tommy Lewis's item in the presentation. She, she is commenting on Tommy Lewis's item in the presentation, um, regarding accidents on the Texas Highway.
Why not? You all hear me? I'm Karen Cantrell from Ward one, and this is just related to what Tommy Lewis is going to talk to you a little bit later. I want to talk to you about pedestrians, according to the Texas Department of Transportation's website, on the pedestrian page, pedestrians have the right of way at intersection and crosswalks. And I know you guys, some of you guys don't know that, but it is true. I've nearly been hit several times up there, crossing at an intersection when I was legally supposed to. So my, my plea to you is to please watch out. There are pedestrians out there, and we all have to share the road. The second thing is about bicycles. Bicycles ride with the traffic. They are considered a vehicle. It would be very safe to wear a helmet. A lot of you don't. The other thing, I've seen people riding against traffic. That's a death wish, okay? If you study physics, you know the two, the two things cannot occupy the same space at the same time. So let's just all be a little friend in the road, watch for pedestrians, watch for pedestrians, and let's step one out there. Thank you.
Next up, we have Brett Bell, Ward one, commenting on the replat.
Hello, my name is Brett Bell. I'm in Ward one. Uh, I live in the Harper District, like probably a lot of us in here. Uh, the only thing, I'm doing this even though we should be able to speak during the hearing for our, the dollar store that's moving in. I want some questions answered. If it's annexed in the city, how does a retail store still get in? What power do we have to say no? But all we get told is, we're going to make a little money. I, I have volunteered a lot of my time, my wife has, and a lot of our friends in this town, because we want it to be better. I'm done. I will give up on Alpine, and I expect every one of you to give up when they allow this to happen, period. The, uh, the other thing that you should know, if none of you do know, they have already started construction. That means I can, I can buy a lot of town, and I can build whatever I want, apparently. And they have nothing, and you have nothing to say about it. That is wrong. I may be from Georgia and not from Alpine, but I live here. This is my home, and I want to stay in Alpine. So the last question I have, uh, that I want to answer is, if you're supposed to put everything, the whole packet of this meeting on the internet for your citizens to see, why does this city attorney not have his PowerPoint up there? Where's the information? They're trying to close your eyes, and they're going to run right over us.
Oh, absolutely.
I can have another.
Next up, we have Andy Covington, Ward one. Uh, she wanted to speak towards item six, the replat application.
Okay, I'm Andy Covington. I am, our home is forty-eight feet from the back of said property that we're discussing. So we definitely are interested in this. I'm a little nervous, so I'm going to read my notes, and I'm facing you, because I feel like I'm speaking for my peers behind me. Transparency and respect are important. When there's no transparency or respect, distrust becomes the byproduct. We understand that you, city council, followed the state's law prescribed steps concerning notification for annexation and zoning property. However, by not notifying citizens by letter who would be affected by this decision, you have given a hint of disrespect, lack of integrity on your part, and a lack of transparency. You have encouraged Alpine citizens to be distrustful of their elected officials. We understand that you're concerned about revenue coming into our town, but at what cost? Sacrificing citizens' housing values, the safety of our children riding their bikes up and down that street that is on the side there, quality of life in our neighborhoods. By appearances, it seems as if you're choosing big business money over quality of life for the citizens of Alpine that trusted you as their representatives. It is true, having to do with notification, you are not the ethics police. You, city council, council members are more. You are responsible for the quality of life for your city. This city is made of people, not corporate entities, that do not live in this town and do not have vested interest in Alpine's future, except for the profit to their pockets that they bring, they bring in. Another dollar store is not growth. We all want growth, but healthy and positive growth, and many of us do not believe this in that. It is yet another nail in the coffin for cheap conformity. We will know by your vote what your bottom line is, money or safe quality neighborhoods. Restore our trust and vote no to replating this piece of property. Say one word to me. There on the front of the council meeting chair, it says, "Public comment or court is not required for speakers who wish to comment on a public hearing item."
Uh, next up, we have Donna Ward. We have Bobby W. Elliott, commenting on the mayor's report and speed bumps.
Hello, people. Nice to see everybody here. It's like a church meeting. I'm Bobby Elliott, and I live in Ward five, right across the street from the big old campus at Saul Ross State University. And I've lived here for twelve years, graduated from Saul Ross, got a BA, major in jazz, just show everybody. The reason I'm here is a very deeply personal thing to me, because I've been a victim of a side swipe collision, where I had my tibia bussed completely in half, my condition on my head, my foot's a minute. And only through the miracle of surgery, they were able to reattach me. I'm not going to gross you out, show my sharp effect as far as. The point I'm trying to make is, this is a small town. I love Alpine. We make hooder bill jobs, you know? I always hear on the radio how this is tightening the community on the air. But when I'm outside in public, I see so many divisions. Can anybody give me one good reason why you should be going fifty miles an hour and twenty mile an hour a month? Has anyone here ever been hit by a car before? Raise your hand. Don't have to be here in Alpine, just anywhere. I almost could have lost my leg. And so I have a little bit of PTSD when I see someone run to a stop sign or a red light, or notoriously stop at the yellow blinking light at McDonald's. That's crazy. They don't need to be driving. My point I'm trying to make is, we need to do something about the speeders in this town, and they are not out of counters, not all of them. We need to do something about the people going the wrong way down the one ways, seen that billions of times. I got hit by a car, by a pickup, last week, he side swiped me. Going east on Holland Avenue, I'm on the left lane, just past Sonic, this Dodge pickup pulled up on the side, and he just whipped over real quick. And I had just enough time to jerk to the left to keep him hitting his driver's side door, and he still connected. He flipped my Jeep up on two. I was like this, and I almost was killed. He was giving the citation. Point I'm trying to make is, it's thirty miles an hour there, and I was doing what he needs, passes me like this. Three to zero, in front of my house, it's close to twenty. I live right across the street from Saul Ross. I see people daily flying uphill fifty miles an hour, downhill fifty miles an hour. I've even seen two people racing each other. Nobody does nothing about it. Saul Ross tells me it's an Alpine problem, because that park from the Wesley Center, if anybody knows where the Wesley Center is.
You've reached the three-minute timeframe. Thank you for your comments.
I'd like to have a great view. Thank you.
We have John Simpson, Ward one, commenting on the replat application.
Everyone hearing me? I, I'm opposed to this because of, uh, I live, oh, John Simpson, I live in the three oh four east area. I live a hundred yards, I'm Ward one, I live a hundred yards across twenty-two from where they're going to build this. So, um, I, I can't compete, I wasn't prepared as she was or he was, but at the same time, uh, I want to oppose this because I like my darkness, I don't want the lights, I don't want the trash, I don't want all the traffic, I don't want all people that don't need to be there, there's enough process too, they can't hire enough people to treat the places they got already. Where are they going to get the workers from? Thank you.
Uh, next up, we have Liz Measures, commenting on the replat application. Point of order, we're not allowed to pass stuff up to the council. It has to be received a week in advance.
Well, maybe. Uh, Liz Measures, how's the volume back there? Okay. And I am one block north of Ward one. I am in the county due east, excuse me, due west of where the dollar store is going to. If we, if it's not approving the replat inconvenience, this dollar store, I'm all for it, because we are going to be inconvenienced seven days a week for the rest of our lives. If it opens at seven or eight, it doesn't close down until ten or twelve. And it's not just the people on the north side, they're inconvenienced. I'm here to talk about the highway necking down to a bottleneck, to a dangerous bottleneck. If people are coming into Alpine from Fort Davis, it's still thirty-five miles an hour at White House. It does not hit thirty until Alpine Creek, right before, uh, right after you pass the felony crystal. Um, people are not slowing down to thirty-five. They will be going faster than thirty-five. At forty-five miles an hour, if they're coming in that, that fast, it takes about two hundred feet to come to a complete stop. And it's seven hundred feet from the White House to where the Dollar General north side will be. If you're coming out of Alpine going north, you hit the thirty-five mile an hour sign there, um, right after the intersection where Luke two two three comes in. So it jacks up to thirty-five miles an hour there. Once you get to the White House, it goes up to forty-five miles an hour. So you have got people trying to slow down it or not, you've got people speeding up. I have, I have been on the highway going to Fort Davis, trying to turn into my street, and there's somebody coming up on my, behind, very fast, and they catch me on the road. That is a very narrow street there. You have got people coming in and out of residential area, and they're, yeah, having to get up the ski and get in between traffic. It's a dangerous bottleneck. Not to mention, if anybody's been up there during certain times of day, there's a deer herd. They cross the street when they want to. If anybody has seen the big mobile homes come through town, they have to come down that street, and then they turn in there at two through three, going around. If anybody is going to the hospital, if there's a bottleneck there in an accident, will not be able to get to the hospital. We have got ambulance is going. So Dollar General coming in is going to be a high traffic in a very narrow street. Earlier you said you wanted to do the best for Alpine. I, I'm all for doing the best job and not doing something shoddy in the fall. But you also need to do the best for the people in that area. Put in stop signs, lower the speed limits, barriers, put up fences, put up walls, where we have got some sort of barrier between us and commercialism. And I think that is about all I have to say. I think I've got some progress that I'm going to fill in some points. So thank you, I appreciate it. No one left.
Next up, we do have Gail Lewis, Ward one, speaking on the replat application.
I'm sorry, I'm Gail Lewis. I live on Ward one, I have five oh six east area. And we, what we've been pretending here is we have a lot of toys that are done, you know? And they could go in and do it if they were still in the county anyway. Why didn't? It's a post that was intended to, to ideal, so, also members there in the county and to the wall. Is that possible, folks? And then, yeah, when they get there, then there is the big end that's sealed, so it's open, well, ours, obviously.
Uh, next up, we have LaFern Scudday, Ward one, speaking on the replat application. Okay, we have Elaine Alvarado, Ward one, speaking on the replat application. Okay. All right, we have Carla Tamanka, speaking on the replat application. And if you could just please state your name and ward for the record.
Sure. Hello, you? My name is Carla Tamanka, and I'm relatively new to Alpine, having purchased a lot in Ward one in twenty seventeen, and I love this town. But I am here, excuse me, to, um, say that dollar stores do not own us. We have the ability to fight, that's why we're all here today. And because of that, I just would like to read three sentences from a Washington DC nonprofit. And because of that, I just would like to read three sentences from a Washington DC nonprofit published in February twenty twenty, talking, called Center for Science in the Public Interest, talking about the rise of Dollar Stores. And, uh, I want to just thank everyone who mentioned the, the problems with the lights, the litter, the traffic. I can't agree with you more, but today I'm going to add to this argument the problems with what they're selling at the Dollar Store, particularly the fact that Dollar Stores shelves are stocked with fewer options than traditional grocery stores, with the predominance of nutrition poor items like candy, chips, and soda. Its location next to the high school will do nothing for childhood obesity, and I think that we can all agree that reducing that in our community is important. We need other healthy food options in our town. Another note from this, um, nonprofit, uh, report is that when Dollar Stores saturate, the community's grocery market full service food stores are actually deterred from opening, and the existing grocers are pushed out. So here we have three Dollar Stores in our town, one near the university that just opened. And here they wanna open a fourth one. I can't imagine what will happen to the remaining quarters and our blue water grocer if that were to happen. And lastly, sales in local grocery stores are known to drop by thirty percent following the opening of the nearby Dollar Store. So here we're talking about raising revenue, but of course, revenue that's raised in one area affects revenue raised elsewhere. So thank you very much for your time.
Next up, we have Jim A. Hurley, Ward One. Would you like to speak? All righty. Did you want us to record your support or opposition of an item?
Oh.
Do you have a replat application?
I'll just reply, yes.
No problem. All right, next up, we do have Marcia.
Yeah.
Okay, would you like to speak?
Yeah.
Um, city ordinance does require that you speak on an agenda item in the public comment section, which item would you speak on?
The replay.
Okay. No problem.
Sure. Hi, my name is Marcia Gary Hurley. I live, um, we are in Ward One, live on Harriet Street. We are definitely against anything being built on this property. If you go down Harriet, that is going to be your main way, other than Highway one eighteen. Okay, I see. They're all, they're all for me, I guess. Um, and, and it is, it is going to be more traffic on Harriet. We moved here from Arlington, Texas, here in rural, et cetera, et cetera, to get away from traffic and lights. Bringing in a Dollar General or any store there is going to kill our dark skies. Our dark skies right now are absolutely beautiful. Those of you who don't go out and look, you really should. It's also going to do a lot with our, with our wildlife. That is going to go south. They are going to leave. Okay, sorry. Okay, right now we have children that ride their bikes up and down the street. Harriet Street's gonna be your main way to get there, other than one one eight, and that's going to be hurting children possibly. And do we really need a Dollar Store? I've agreed with other people in the past. Three, I think, is, is probably not all we really need, but if we do get one, I can say that Harriet Street will be having speed bumps in our future. And that is a fact. Because we won't be able to allow the traffic to be going so fast up and down the street to hurry up and get there for something that they can probably do without. But I am definitely against this, and I appreciate your, thank you.
Uh, lastly, we do have Brenda Young, Ward One, speaking on the replat application.
Cheers. My name is Brenda Young, and I live at one oh two East Harriet in the county. Okay, you can go from Avenue A into Street, all the way down to Street, to Fort Davis, to Seventh Street, all the way over to Harriet, to one eighteen, without one stop. Now, right now, people walk their dogs. They, kids ride their bikes. People run down Harriet Street. That is gonna become nothing but dangerous. You also have high school. Let's talk about the high school first. You don't think those kids are gonna head to the Dollar Store with their friends after the high school gets up? Okay, we have a twenty mile an hour school zone, right? That's only when school starts and just when school ends. Not before every game, not after every game. You're gonna have basketball games, you're gonna have volleyball games. And I tell you, those kids are gonna go down to that Dollar Store, and you know what? That first high school kid that gets run over by a car is gonna be on your heads. Because you did this. And there are communities all across the nation prohibiting Dollar Stores. They're prohibiting this from happening. And you are incorrect, sir. It was not surrounded by the city. They were not surrounded by the city, and the city will not benefit from Dollar Stores. Here's a quick rundown. You can, you pull this up on the internet. The real reason Dollar Stores can be harmful to communities. Next one. Dollar General and Family Dollar are harming communities. Report. Dollar Stores are targeting struggling community neighborhoods. Another one. How Dollar Stores prey on the poor. Another one. The surprising impact of your neighborhood Dollar Store. And another one. Are Dollar Stores bad for cities? The article answers yes. Okay, you better put up a crossing, okay, a crosswalk for that high school. You may, you better make sure your infrastructure is in place. There better be a light on Loop Road and Highway one eighteen with a cross. Because you are going to be endangering our children. And, and you compromising the community of the neighborhood.
Uh, that concludes public comments this evening.
So moving on.
I'm sorry, did we have somebody else to fill out a public comment form? Let me, let me check. You might have. I'm sorry, I have quite a few here. Okay. Yes.
This is a proclamation in honor of Alpine Texas Teachers' Day. Whereas Alpine, Texas's future strength depends on providing a high-quality education for all students, and whereas teacher quality matters more to student achievement than any other school-related factor. And whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lesson plans and supporting students, and whereas our AISD teachers have demonstrated great resilience, adaptability, and creativity during COVID nineteen crisis. And whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community, and whereas Teachers Can is a statewide movement supported by more than a hundred and twenty-five marketing businesses and organizations committed to the elevating, to elevating the teaching profession and honoring the critical role teachers play in the success of Texas. And now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Alpine City Council joins Teachers Can and its partnering entities across Texas in celebrating World Teachers' Day and hereby proclaims October the fifth, two thousand twenty-two to be Alpine Teachers' Day. Be it further proclaimed that the Alpine City Council encourages members of our community to be a light for Alpine's teachers and personally express appreciation to our teachers and display a light blue ribbon outside your homes or businesses this week of October the fifth as a symbol of support for our education. In witness whereof, the mayor has here to set his hand this fourth day of October, years twenty twenty fifteen. Now, the mayor has a present, a proclamation for in the public natural gas way.
People don't want another Dollar General. And they don't want it there.
Andy Guzman, who's the director of the Alpine Municipal Gas Facility, will accept the proclamation. This is in honor of our local community-owned natural gas utility. Whereas the citizens of Alpine, Texas, place high value on local control over community services and therefore have chosen to operate a community-owned, locally-controlled, non-for-profit natural gas utility. And whereas the city of Alpine Gas Department provides our homes, businesses, farms, social service, and local government agencies with reliable, efficient, and cost-effective natural gas, employing sound business practices designed to ensure the best possible service. And whereas the city of Alpine Gas Department is a valuable community asset that contributes substantially to the well-being of local citizens through energy efficiency, customer service, environmental protection, economic development, and safety awareness. And whereas the city of Alpine Gas Department's first and only purpose is to work in partnership with its customer owners to furnish an essential public service and the best customer service to community citizens. And whereas the city of Alpine Gas Department will continue to work to ensure that consumers benefit from any changes in the natural gas utility industry, just as it has since two thousand and twelve, the year when the utility was acquired to serve all the citizens of Alpine, Texas. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the week of October the second to October the eighth, two thousand twenty-two, be designated Public Natural Gas Week in Alpine, Texas, one of the city of Alpine Gas Department for its contributions to the community and to make its consumer owners, policymakers, and employees more aware of the gas department's significant contributions to their well-being. In witness whereof, the mayor hereunder sets his hand this fourth of October in the year two thousand twenty-two.
Likes to hear what it's, you talked about, and one of the main topics is speeding and running stop signs. And I know maybe people's working to remedy this problem. Someone else had a question about how the city recoups money for demolishing buildings. And our building services director told me that there's a ordinance eighteen dash two ninety and eighteen dash two ninety-one, which enables the city to apply a lien to the property in order to recoup the money for demolition if the resident homeowner does not pay for it. Also, I have received phone calls and text messages. A lot of people are looking to help and to be an active part of the community. And so we have resident volunteers stepping out, trying to do their part. We had one volunteer who's bought trees for the downtown area. And I know Megan in her report, you want to talk about volunteers. Would you like to put in and stick on that now?
I can. Um, volunteer has become a, a big word around here. And so I've been doing a little research and looking at the best format and best way to kind of have a, a place for everyone who wants to volunteer to sign up. Um, it's not just volunteering for certain things, it's helping all of the departments as well. And certainly you've already started with that. So I've looked at other cities to see how they address volunteering. Um, and we're looking at designing a webpage that allows our residents kind of a, a listed opportunity to volunteer. I would like to start off internal with the city departments that may need additional help. Um, how kind of the registration process and application that can be filled out. We wanna keep track of the hours to see what money is being brought back in because you're helping with our labor costs. Um, I've also talked to Mr. Pran about maybe some of the legal aspects of it to make sure that, you know, we do cover all of those as well. A lot of cities do have a waiver that you don't hold the city in harm. Um, and then of course, you know, just having a central place, so you can help out not just with the streets or the, the parks. You know, there may be some, um, office positions that we need help with. I know IT's been brought up on multiple occasions. Um, but we wanted to start kind of small and focus on the city, and then we wanted to grow. We wanted to become a big volunteer base, or maybe the Alpine Public Library starts joining, and maybe the Sunshine House could sign up for the other outside nonprofit agency to be able to help them as well. So, um, hopefully within the next, I'd say, couple weeks, we'll have something up and running. We'll have it on our website. The people can go in, they can register, fill out the form, and then we can connect you with the individuals that best need the help.
Thank you. All right, and then I also had a phone call from a resident who's interested in getting a community garden started. I know that we've had this in the past, and that's something that we are working on again, just going forward with. Uh, next up on the mayor report is the Dollar General store. We are listening to the comments. We have noted them, and I also have noted them from social media, awesome flyers, place in the door. I also do the carpenter addition, so I, I know where you're coming from, and we will move on. Clocks working, are now working downtown because of all of the involvement. And I wanted to thank David Lewis for that. He took care of that. So residents really can make a difference, and we appreciate it. Also, the sirens for a while that were a couple of them weren't working. They should all be working. And I wanted to remind everybody, you can test it on the first Wednesday of each month at six PM. So listen, see if you can hear your siren, and if you can't, please send me an email so that we can look at that. And then I wanna remind everybody that we do have a radio show every other Thursday, so it'll be this Thursday. It's called City Talk, and our building services will be the special guest on the show. All right, that includes the mayor report, the city attorney report, city manager, the people in this should mention.
Um, yes, there's just the two. Um, I do want to thank Mr. Lewis as well for volunteering his time. Um, it did cost a little bit of money to get the necessary parts to get them fixed, um, but he was a wealth of information. Um, currently, the company that had the parts out of business. So he was a great asset to be able to track them down, um, do a little fabrication. Uh, we will be working with him in the future, um, to maintain them on a regular basis. I'm really excited about that. And he got us keys to them. It was very exciting. Um, we now have keys. Um, and I, I know it's not there, but I also do wanna thank all the residents who attended the first town hall meeting last night. It was very well received, and I greatly appreciate it. And then tonight, starting at six, about an hour ago, um, it is National Night Out. Um, it is a big program that our law enforcement puts together, along with our EMS, um, the fire department, a lot of the, the local, um, law enforcement agencies participate as well. It is actually going on at Bain Park. It is not at coconut this year, it's at Bain Park. So if we get out of here before eight, um, they have hot dogs being provided by first fault. Um, well, they're doing the cooking quarters provided us the hot dogs themselves. They have a bouncy house for children. Um, of course, we get the interaction with the law enforcement, getting to see their equipment, having a good conversation with them. So I do encourage everyone in this meeting, if we get out of time, to go ahead and head over to Bain Park and enjoy that.
All right. So the city staff update has been rescheduled for next week.
Yes, both city staff updates have been rescheduled. Yes, both city staff updates have been scheduled for the next week.
All right, so public hearings in mind. You're in this section of the, so first public hearing. Can you hear me?
Okay.
All right, so city council cannot discuss anxiety with you, but we do have a public hearing to obtain system views and comments regarding replat application to allow applicant or Apple 11A LLC to replat for the purpose of consolidating lots for commercial retail development. The property in question is located at 1911 North State Highway 118. The record property owner is Force Apple 11A LLC. Do we have anybody here to come up and comment on this? State your name and ward number for the record.
My name is Reagan Stone. I believe I'm in Ward 2. Just want to note that I am against the replat. I think this is a great point to be able to stand up, even regardless of, I think, bad legal advice, perhaps numerous times, but at the same time, you know, the state will eventually, you know, I'm sure, make a law that says you can't, you know, do whatever you're gonna do, the replat, or saying you make a law saying that you can't have Dollar Generals or places that have 80% non-fresh food, or whatever law you decide to do. Do it. Do something else other than just doing a rubber stamp for something bad in your neighborhood for your community. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hey, is anyone else on up side? Mr. Stephen, you'll be next. Please state your name and ward number for the record.
Hi, I'm Kevin Kayden. I had been a resident of Alpine for all of four months. I come from California, which is a dirty word, I get it. But four dollar stores with 6,000 people would be messed up in California. I came here to escape that. It's horrible. There's obviously a benefit to Dollar General. How many people, right? They requested to be annexed into the community for a good reason. Not because they wanted to pay us taxes, because they wanted the benefit of being in the city. So the question was asked earlier, if they weren't, if they weren't annexed, would they have still come? Maybe. But they're definitely getting a benefit by being annexed, which is why they requested to be annexed in the first place. So hopefully, that was a question that everyone thought about before they accepted the annex. If you got bad legal advice, and that's why you voted for it, that's definitely concerning. I'm an attorney. Sometimes when attorneys get bad legal advice, a new attorney is what's wanted, not just the legal advice.
Kevin, is your future last?
Kayden, K-A-Y-P-O-N. I'm in Ward 1 all the way. Why isn't the city trying to court businesses that will improve our community? I think that's a huge question that should be asked. I'm not trying to say Walmart's the best thing in the world. I'm not a huge fan of Walmart either. But a Walmart would be a heck of a lot better than a four-dollar store in this community. Maybe we can actually buy some decent products instead of the crap that they sell at Dollar General. It's not good stuff. That's all I'd like to say.
And might anybody know much of your goodness, personal attacks, like anybody in this building?
Our executive is on Ward 5. I too am against Dollar General coming in, and I'm normally pro-business. I believe there should be opportunities to do in this case. Four Dollar General stores in this town is completely excessive. I do believe city council best responsible has been out more to do more than the air understand. He's heard from a number of residents, he says it's time to do a traffic study. Have you as city initiated a traffic study for the significant issues that will go on in that area if that Dollar General is allowed to occupy, if you have my opinion. Number two, has anyone actually looked at the state for their stores? If you get some online reading, then it's pretty easy to find. Number of Dollar General stores that have violated state requirements of the International Building Code and including of the city. They have locked back doors, they have stacked excellent items in the hallways. They have fire extinguishers, they admit it's totally unsafe. While this city has the opportunity to go out and inspect weeds, I certainly think we have the opportunity to go out and inspect to make sure there's compliance standards in the building that the city has in place, to ensure that these stores are doing what they're supposed to be doing. And we haven't shown modestness in that action. You as a city council have responsibility for safety of residents. That's part of your responsibility. That's part of my view of why transmission is so darn important this year, lady, to really understand what the implications are while we already have four intersections that are going to approach unusableness now, unusable, meaning you can't get people through them. I was thinking we started to forget what are the implications on the north side of the council. Well, it's a response from the city council. My view is, and whether you support law or not, and opinion about whether or not you can or can not vote against this, part of the message is back to Dollar General. New city councils say, no, if you vote against the replat, there's no question they're gonna come back and fight it. That's why you hire law, to be able to work those issues. And in my view, advise, be the city council, by your appropriate arguments, to be able to go back and say, Dollar General, are you really here to support the citizens? Or just after enhancing the $34 million you have? You already have 18,190 stores. Build your store somewhere else, not in Alpine. Thank you.
After Mr. Bell.
Okay, again, my name is Brett Will. I'm in Ward 1. There were just a few things that I thought of was, of course, our roads. If that Dollar General is going there, what's gonna happen to all the roads that are surrounded? Those are some of our road works. I know because I've seen them. I was going to volunteer to try to help fill things, but with a Dollar General there, it is a waste of my time. The, let's see, we have one surrounded by residential. Some of the questions I've heard before from other citizens was, how is it gonna be stopped? And we know, we all live in Alpine, we go to the other Dollar Stores. They're not stopped. So if I see something wrong with one thing, see something wrong with another thing, it's good to assume that the next one is gonna be bad as well. I want to, I also wanted to state a brief history, and this is knowledge and experience that I have of a prior career. I was a law enforcement officer. I always say in Atlanta, but I was south of Atlanta. I was in Clayton County, Georgia. It is what most of the airport in Atlanta sits on. After the '96 Olympics, they moved all the projects down there. All, it's, it is filled with apartment complexes and low income. What ruined that place, one of the nice, beautiful cities, Jonesboro, Georgia, which is where, if anyone's heard of Gone with the Wind, Gone with the Wind, that is where it was written. That is where the woman who wrote that book is from. It is steep in history. That history has been wiped away. It's been wiped away by Dollar Stores, title pawn stores, pawn shops, and anything else that low income loves. We, yes, we don't make a lot of money in this town, but we're not low income. We've got a lot of heart. But that's gonna ruin us. And that's where this town will go. And I don't mean that in any threat of any kind. I have seen, I've traveled the world, three tours at Iraq. I have lived in Virginia, all the way to California. I see this town die in 20, 30 years because decisions like this. I decided to come to Texas because I was told Texas is a free state. People in Texas are proud to be from Texas. We have a joke in Georgia that's like, hey, how do you know somebody from Texas? They'll tell you. Okay? I come to this state thinking it's a free state, and then now I'm told that it doesn't matter. It's happening in the city limits, and they're gonna build it anyway. How does that make sense? Where I come from, if it's inside a city limit, the city can say, no, get out. But apparently, we're having to lay over and just let it happen? That doesn't make sense to me. I say vote against it. I'm totally against it. But something more needs to be done, because where's the next Dollar Store we're gonna go to? Where's the next one?
Mr. Bell, that's a three-minute timeframe. Thank you.
If there's anyone else who wants to talk about something. It's a great idea. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Stephen Hummel. I'm the Dark Skies Coordinator with McDonald Observatory. So I'm not, but actually a resident of Alpine, actually, of the Observatory. But I'm here to clarify a few things about Alpine's Dark Sky Ordinance, which they passed last year, a year and a half ago now. I think in the last planning and zoning committee meeting, there was a little bit of unclarity or confusion about what a store, or not just Dollar General, but any store, anything that were to occupy that space. I should also say, it wouldn't really even matter if it's in the city or the county, because they both have ordinances which are pretty much identical. But in particular, what a sign would have to look like. Now, the Alpine's ordinance states that if an internally illuminated sign, such as once common a Dollar General, were to be built after a certain date, if it has a light background, or yellow, or tan, or anything like that, then it should be switched to that in a dark background with light letters, thus reducing the brightness of the sign. Now, there is an exception if there is no alternative design available. So for example, if they have a registered logo. However, there is an alternative design available, and it's in use in Flag Chat, Arizona, and some other cities in Arizona which have similar light pollution laws, basically. So in other words, should Dollar General build a store there, its limited sign would have to be turned off after the location closes. It would have to have a black background with yellow letters. So that's the requirement, basically, in the ordinance. The other things they would have to do in order to be compliant would be have a cap of the intensity of lights. And the lights would also have to be under 2700 Kelvin color temperature. In English, sort of an incandescent amber color. So in other words, you would not have very white LEDs lighting you, but much softer color and appearance. And the lights would also have to be turned off after the location closes. And if you can see the source of the light from your property, so in other words, if you're one of the neighborhood residents and you see the direct source of illumination from your house, that's considered by trespass, and they would have to shield it. This applies pretty much to all businesses that are instructed new, and will apply to everything in about three and a half years' time or so once the, quote, quote, the ordinance's grandfather clause runs its course. We're not really happy with this. Thank you. I should also add, if you have any questions or concern about lighting of any kind, wherever it is, I'm happy to talk with you immediately.
Good evening. My name is Steve Zent, and I reside in Ward 5. And many have already commented very well on the concerns of annexation and zoning. And I'd like to talk about what actually pertains to all of us, the whole community. And that's the aggressive nature of the corporate intentions of Dollar Store to build 20,000 stores across the nation. If you go online, you can see many headlines like this one. Dollar Stores Are A Sign Of Urban Decay. It's Time To Stop Their Spread. And this came to my attention driving across the middle of Texas from, going from here to Colleen, Texas, to visit family, and I noticed that numerous Dollar Stores and Dollar Trees that were coming up in small communities, and I was thinking to myself, what is happening to our country? Where are we going? What direction are we headed? Community, cities, towns across the nation are having this problem. Many, Alice, Fort Worth, Misspeak, Texas, they have, if the annexation goes through, you still have opportunities to block Dollar Stores for coming into town. Many communities are crafting policy disallowing building of more stores, or they are requiring them to steering a percentage of fresh food, rather than creating a food desert of high processed foods in low-income communities. They are a direct competition to our local grocery store. We are the seed quarters trimming down to one store. Quarters hires hires a lot of people, friends, relatives. We see them every day when we go to the store. Dollar Stores hire very few people, maybe a manager and a couple of shoppers. And they do not spend their money locally. They do not contribute to local activities. Cities are not benefiting from Dollar Stores. I challenge the council to do more homework instead of only focus on the revenue. Instead, focus on the long-term impact of our community and the welfare of our citizens.
On the Dollar Stores.
Hi, I'm terrified, so I'm reeling from my phone. My name is Hannah Schaper. I live in Ward 2. And I just would like to hear someone speak to what would happen if you all voted no on this. I commend you, sir, for sharing the information you require to share. However, your people would like to know alternatives. With due respect to your team and the gentleman who spoke earlier, I don't know your names, sorry. This is not the time to give up. Your city will stand beside you if you stand beside us. Please vote no.
I'm Carrie Blackman. I live in Ward 4. I, I live at 109 North 14th Street, the general Dollar, the Dollar General that's behind my home. I had to put up an eight-foot privacy fence, so I didn't see the 747 landing in my backyard. The lights are bad. The trash that comes over my eight-foot fence, it's unstoppable. It is really, I have no choice. The Dollar General didn't ask me if they could go there. I live there. I'm making do with what I got. I have a fortress around my house now, all eight-foot, just so I don't have to see those lights. And just the cracks between the eight-foot fence, you still feel the lights. It's just, it's really, it's light pollution, like you said.
I'm Trigary Hurley. I live on Harriet Street. Arlington got really bad, yes. Alpine was our, became our dream. And this shows you how much I want Alpine. This is how we roll in Alpine, Texas. You can see it on my T-shirt. This is how we roll in Alpine, Texas. You can see it on my T-shirt. I don't wanna have to stop wearing this shirt because of another store, a Dollar General, because it's just not needed. So thank you again, once again. Okay, moving on to our consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's consent agenda contains two items: approval of September twentieth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting minutes, approval of the appointment of Robert Savory to the Ward Two position on the Building and Standards Commission. That concludes the presentation of consent agenda items.
Get in motion. Agenda is approved. Moving on to information and discussion items.
So we actually have Tona Vega instead of Letitia.
Y'all can see me now. My name is Tona Vega. I've been working for the Family Crisis Center for sixteen years. I do domestic violence and sexual assault cases. But the reason that I am here is because I need volunteers. We have the Dejaboo Drug Store. We need help there. At the office, I need somebody to help me clean. To take y'all to our hidden shelter. We need help cleaning the shelter and our meeting room. So if y'all know of any volunteers that wanna volunteer, come by our office at six oh six North Fifth Street. Pick up an application. And you fill out the application, and then I will need an ID, and we do background checks, and then we'll go from there. Thank you so much. So if you know of anybody, send them over to the Family Crisis Center, six oh six North Fifth Street. Thank you.
Hello, can everyone hear me? All right. My name's Andrew Pierce. I'm the, uh, Fire Chief for the Alpine Fire Department. Going to get my tablet here, I'm going to get this presentation pulled up. Are you able to pull it up when you're in?
I'm gonna try. The system is different than mine.
Gotcha.
So it may not, oh. I was headed the right direction, though.
Right. While they're pulling that up, I'll go ahead and get started real quick. So we'll provide our quarterly report. Uh, like I said, my name's Andrew. I'm the Fire Chief currently. Uh, the Assistant Chief is Charles Warden. Our equipment and apparatus update. So we just purchased nine new Motorola Miniter majors with our county budget. And again, we were able to save, uh, taxpayer dollars because I'm able to program all our radios and I do all the programming in-house. I have to send them out anywhere. I can take care of all of that. Additionally, our fire station training room has been updated to show all of our awards and past history. So if you stop by there, you're able to see a lot of the the history that we've done in our almost hundred years of service. Um, additionally, with our apparatus, our Kubota, I've got the lights fixed on that. You all may have seen it in the homecoming parade, as well as the pumps, and that is an operational piece of equipment that will be going out on trailers to brush fires and whatever else we see fit. We also have plans to replace emergency lights on apparatus that are going out, so we've got a lot of, uh, the, uh, older-style halogen lights that are going out and it's hard to find replacement parts for. So we're gonna be retrofitting those with LED, which are much brighter, safer, and also are a lot easier on the truck's charging system. Uh, another big piece of equipment that we have just prepared is, uh, we purchased fire station software. Uh, this is a record management system that allows us to enter in calls that go straight to FEMA, so we'll get grants because they're getting all these calls that are directly to it. We can also manage our personnel, our apparatus, inventory, training. Everything that we do can be entered into that computer. Uh, apparently we've got six detectors that are going to be deployed throughout all of the, uh, command toilets, as well as our first-out apparatus, so that we can have hydra masks, stuff like that all digitized, so we can provide a better service. Uh, on our notable events, we donated school supplies to the police department slash the school district because we believe in the, uh, the growth of our younger generation coming through. We wanna support them as much as we can. We've also been looking into the legal aspects and different ramifications of having, like, junior firefighters and children who wanna get, you know, high schoolers wanna get into the community because that's how Mike and Mark up their starts. They carry a radio major in high school, so, you know, we, uh, we'd love to inspire another generation of people to do public safety. Uh, another big thing that happened is we got new gear awarded by the PRSC. So I sent in information to them, and they awarded us, uh, six sets each, uh, bunker gear, which is the huge tan gear you'll see as where we go into house fires, as well as an additional six sets of wildland fire gear, so when we go do brush fires. Um, the approximate cost of this gear is in the, uh, six, six-figure range for that amount of gear. So we're very gracious to have got all that. We've got all our people measured. Uh, so the gear should be coming in soon. We had our, uh, representative, Dave Bell, fire equipment come down, measure everyone, so we can get that gear coming. Uh, additionally, we have, um, our captain, Julie Warden, has got her Texas EMT certification. So she is now working for Emergent Air EMS, as well as providing emergency care while on the fire department when we respond to accidents and everything. We provide emergency care regardless of, you know, for operating through the EMS, we have an agreement with Emergent Air that our emergency services personnel provide care for any need. Additionally, um, our firefighter EMT Zachary Davis promoted to Lieutenant, which is a junior officer position. He's, uh, he's been here, he worked for EMS for five years, uh, when it was under Mike Scudder, and now he is, uh, he's been on the department's side joint, and he's, uh, he's been a great leader, so. Uh, moving on, we have our, uh, really old notable emergency recall, which thankfully, uh, we had a rollover with entrapment at the line on sixty-seven ninety. Uh, we had to cut the patient out through the windshield of the vehicle. Uh, we, along with Emergent Air, provided emergency care to this patient. Um, he was transported to the hospital, but non-life threatening injuries. And the, his, uh, he had a dog with him that we transported to the animal shelter thing, uh, thanks to the animal services for being able to hold on to him while his owner was in the hospital. So another big deal we had was ISO being, uh, ISO goes, is a nationwide deal that goes and inspects fire departments and city services for being up to a certain code, and they have a ranking, and that determines what you're gonna pay on insurance costs. Uh, now, he came out here, we checked all of our equipment, our records. We met with the, the ECC, which is the dispatch center, and the water department. Um, there was a great outcome. It seems like we're gonna be moving up a rank instead of staying, staying where we're at, which is currently in ISO class four. We may be moving up to a class three. We're just waiting on all the paperwork, which is incredible news. There's not many volunteer departments through the nation that have a ISO class three rating. So. Uh, additionally, we also went out to the solar farm on sixty-seven. We went out there with the DPS Sheriff's Office, uh, different emergency agencies out there so that we can review their emergency procedures, check the map, see what the layout is, what the procedure is when there is an emergency, because we have that numerous fires out there already. Uh, and that way, we've got contact information, so if something happens, you know, I go out there, two AM, I've got the phone number, the person's gonna call to get everything taken care of, and to make sure all of our people are safe, because there's a lot of, uh, electricity running through that place. Finally, our calls from June to August. We had eight city calls, ten county calls. Thankfully, a lot of this rain has helped us immensely. We had a, a lot of horrible fires the first part of this year, but we've, uh, kind of called down the calls. And these range from vehicle accidents to structure fires to medical assists, so we, we really run the game of the calls, so about eighteen calls in that time. And finally, we have a picture from Bonfire. All of our people in here. I want to say thank you for your time. And I appreciate all the community's support with that recently.
Good thinking, though. You do work. Five minutes.
Okay, go ahead.
So we are in discussion items. Y'all hear me? Uh, I probably can hear everybody. They have five in the hour. That's the plan. I just want you guys to know, we really are working on it. Um, I've actually been out in the desert. They are the eight-point line. They are the eight one lights. Um I've had the pleasure of visiting Laura Gold and. Tom was also here tonight in regards to my client. Um currently, they're not my client. We are looking at replacing the vault, which Mr. Weber actually just informed me a little bit more information on it in regards to. Change the actual lighting for it. Um we're trying to put my whole then before your business gets unsafe. There is one that's actually broken by five old bring though. You'll notice it's trying to hang the off the fire right after the fall. Um looking at getting that one fixed as well. We really are working on it. We're trying to get some material to get them fixed so that we can get them up and running. But at the same time, we want to make sure they're not sky compliant, um so we don't violate our work order. Um they are the city's responsibility. Uh Chris Weber and I've had this conversation many times. Um it was part of a downtown appreciation project. And but we are actively working on it and we hope to get them, if not all of them, most of them, especially long fifth and. Because that's where the majority of them are at. It's that kind of cluster by one thing, national base. And we will bring you all in that area to see that those eight or nine are kind of that's the same uh concept as the thought. So we are actively working towards this. It is taking us a little bit more time to track down material, get them.
We're trying. We were, my thing. We've got to get everything located. It it is a supply thing. Um Eddie and I have been talking about it. We have a game plan over the next couple of weeks, see if we can get everything in in time. And we don't want to spend too much money to have to take them down and not be able to use them. Great that Chris provided me some insight. Um so we have another strategy. It's working on this.
That is an option we're looking at.
Just like that. Well, I mean, it's there for us. Yeah, we're by wise of state. We are, we have a lot of people there. But I really wanted to say about my work for all these years, we get hot words for you guys. I know y'all love our walk. Love you guys.
I like very good being like, I think I'm here. Real soft focus, yeah, I asked my wife. Um just a little bit of history of how those like happened. Um I'm Chris Weber, worked for the best job in the community twenty six years. My final year, your area engineer, so great with me. But I think it's important to remember how some of these things happen in this community. One really unique opportunity, we got to film and now they're on the end that uh. We're very involved with this project. Uh the lead, uh Captain Johnson, for America, the guy who we had gone through trying to figure this out. We were able to deliver this project for a lot of amenities and that including lots of city made for. Furo City Max, last project I've seen of that kind. The only agreement we follow is give the city what they ask for, get what they want. Very easy. Um but you know, we just will make an experiment that I believe was last updated nineteen ninety nine, which comes from about the very. Go your way, maybe next six daughter, no, thank you for your service in the great state of Texas. There's certain responsibilities that city guys can do. Maintenance of those facilities is one of them. Don't read it too deeply. Says you're supposed to follow scope too, once we clear that early through. Uh but there are some pretty, pretty severe stipulations in there for students who takes care of that. It is really important to maintain that infrastructure so we don't have a kind of build it or forget mentality. It's all my kids. I'm not gonna buy a new post if they don't take care of what they have. So I think that that really, for all of us public servants, it's really true. Uh maintain what you have before. Everybody likes everybody likes to fix the new things, but we have to take care of what we have. Show pride in our communities. That it kind of goes without saying, who public servant I can say this, you know, we've got to mix things with light law, go correct, so. That's what I'll say there. Nothing anybody got to be worried about.
That would be option three. We're looking at getting them fixed. That that's the main goal. Um using the PD, um it's called floodlights for specific areas. They have several. And then the last one will be looking at using um the stream light or LED lights.
Like one thing that I did pick was the flashlight that Arrow here, it used to be like paramedic here, they donated to us. But they provided them to everybody, so that's the thing we could ask them, maybe to donate.
Get a bunch of flashlights, little flashlights they pass them up. We get them printed with purple.
I have still I have to go around. One was why I would make a map, what my show. They help us. Doing for me, you know, through the event so much.
We're getting back.
There's a comment, uh I've now find information to the city on problems to. It's needed for places to lighting from the office. Uh yeah, I mean. If a comment is maintenance is a concern, uh swapping for LEDs probably be the widest choice. May possibly more upfront, but LED uh would last five and five longer than current sites. On my class, so. You'd get a little more of a, you say a lot of like. Um and if, you know, the solution is not found for our law, obviously, you can keep lighting. Go Texas, temporary lighting, I'm a little about, but I'm not. But I would recommend just, you know, a stream light or lower intensity would probably from, you better from a per perspective, from an atmosphere. Well, uh high intensive lights, larger floodlights would probably. Uh but there's a lot of layer and they actually create. Uh solid argument, lower intensity, we're just. With the the sample area, you're not gonna hear from me. Is anyone having questions for me?
Okay, we're almost finished. I don't have to worry. This is a presentation by Tommy Lewis regarding.
Hey, uh. Just to recap. I'm Tommy Lewis, the foreword for, and just to recap, uh I requested the uh publics, public records. For all of the accidents that involve pedestrians for the past ten years, I wanted to play any. Ten is good. Uh so I'd like to uh present this informal briefing on pedestrian incidents involving hard on the vehicles. That's been the public information act two thousand twelve, two thousand twenty two. Firstly, it's not as bad as that. I was told some alarming stories about folks with your phone, as I mentioned last month, I personally had had several close calls on that phone. According to these records, there's apparently a trend of escalation in the last five years. Here's the breakdown. In two thousand twelve, there are two accidents, two thousand thirteen and fourteen, two each. Two thousand sixteen, seventeen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, there was zero. But in two thousand eighteen, we jumped to four. And then in two thousand nineteen, three, two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty one, four and three so far this year, we still have. Uh art walk, Thanksgiving, Halloween, Day of the Dead, Our Lady of Peace. New Year's Eve took to go and uh. This area along Colin and E Street, the you know, the one ways at this street is a gauntlet. So I'm recommending that uh that we put. Crosswalks as a model. And then to reduce the speed limit from eleven to to American from thirty to twenty. One, one of the people that just got hit over here by the Coca-Cola factory that's fired last week. And uh that was not in the report, but um step versa language for a month. The culprit is still that law. So here is what I've. I've been involved in some uh. Infrastructure, sorry about all that. Uh infrastructure and uh culture. Development regarding classes. That's what I have to offer. Anybody else wants, it's a multifaceted uh problem and can't be approached. So uh the first issue is reduce the speed limit to twenty. There's. The Holland Hotel, there's the bars, there's the shops, there's the movie theater, people crossing. In the middle of the road, even one of the suicides that was, I mean, the accidents was actually a suicide at the train station two years ago. Uh could have been prevented with speaker number twenty. Maybe. So remember, uh to be uh crosswalks made, that's just have to do that. Yes. You have to have a solid place where people will walk across the street. One way sign is when you walk, when you roll up on a stop sign, says one way. Your peripheral vision on the north is is cut off. You can't see the one way. So outside, out of line, need another one across the street on the opposite. Stop sign. Trying to make some of the bold that they've done a nice job of you find the streets with these plants because sometimes you can't steer around and people step out in front of them. As I mentioned, uh. There are only two incidents so far, there's three incidents of blah blah blah. Oh yeah, I think there should be a PSA. Uh re- regarding these facts on on the radio station. Uh that would be helpful for the the future events of. You know, Our Lady of, through New Year's Eve, all of those events are gonna be uh, you know, both pedestrians. Sorry, uh. Getting nervous of people. Uh our last suggestion is black wraps around town. That's something I've been doing for Ireland, to Los Angeles, to uh. Fort Worth, Texas. I I just bandicued them in, but I don't want to do that here because it's a small community and I'll get red. But I I make these really cute ones that look like horses. And there's a gr- a bunch of great places. That's what I can do. And uh. If you want to see what. You know, the 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 big thing is that I didn't even contemplate uh before I did this research. Is that the sixty seven corridor is trying to expand again. We put it down a couple of years ago and now they're trying to do it again. Let me paint a picture of what progress looks like to people like Kelsey Warren. Just take a picnic of to pay us. Leave your windows down, put some random items, maybe a. A diaper bag full of poopy diapers, a bottle of Tabasco sauce and a bicycle pump. Leave the windows down, go in and have your chili dog, come back, all that stuff will be gone, bodily. The basket will be empty because it's got a little bit of alcohol in it. And there'll be a layer of dust on dash about four inches thick. That's what's gonna happen if this. Four door gets approved. We need to bypass the road around this place. Nobody driving eighteen here is to pull over, buy postcards or you know, any of the other little shops that we have. And it's not, it's not gonna create any kind of a real value. Seeing that's all I have to say except that uh. Apparently, there's only two people in this room that. That want the dollar demo sorted. And uh. Y'all should take that into account. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you for clarifying. Okay, moving on to action items. Uh the first one, C manager.
The first one is approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty two dash one zero dash zero one. And ordinance amending chapter ten, animals to the Alpine Code of Ordinances. Amending article two, keeping animals, amending sections ten through forty eight, registration of dogs and cats. Providing for updated registration fees and procedures for the registration of dogs and cats.
Okay, any motion?
Let me pull them up. I didn't make all my notes. Um so the animal advisory board met to discuss their fee. One of which is registration of animals. Should have paper. Yes. Give me two seconds. I do apologize.
In the back of the book.
I think that's it.
That's three dollars.
Yeah, that's the only one.
Any other discussion? Let's vote on favor, which you're right here. Action item number two to the manager.
Approved resolution twenty twenty two dash one zero dash zero one. A resolution designating the Alpine Avalanche as the official newspaper of the city. Just a brief description. Um we uh. By resolution designate the official newspaper for the city of Alpine, the Alpine Avalanche is our local newspaper.
The motion. And the second. Discussion. But it's all in favor of you, right? She passes to me. Okay. Action item number three to the manager.
Approve a repla application to allow applicant force Apple one eighteen LLC. A repla for the purpose of consolidating lots for commercial retail development. The property in question is located at one nine one one North State Highway one eighteen. The record property owner is Force Apple one one eight LLC.
His motion. Second.
Okay, so essentially the motion is lo- uh lost due to uh. The item is lost due to a lack of emotion. So if no one makes a motion, the item, nothing will happen with it.
Yeah, of course.
Right. So lack of a second. You have to have a second in order to even have a discussion or to approve it. So the item would be lost due to lack of a second.
No second.
Yes, that's correct.
Y'all here. Thank Ted for all your good help. Thank God. Thank the school, telling us, Randy. Thank you for the support. Andrew. Now, Chris, Chris Weber just said it. He goes, take care of our employees. I never liked the idea. I made a vote. This is how. It does sound. We're not going to vote. God, I won't. It's not even possible. I have my possession. If it comes. Long, long shot at. But cannot come out and call me on shot. Thank you for coming.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate Julie Wharton for getting her EMC certification. And to Zach Davis for this motion. I'd also like to thank you for the work to. Mr. Cheater having workshop with you. We have a great turnout. I urge all to make the other ones. There is still more and more of us there. Please come up as you see. When people get involved, that's what we hear of what we want. That's the only way that things are going to change in Alpine. Citizens continue to stay involved and help us make decisions if we have to.
Andy. I also agree. You know, we don't know how to help or what to do. Unless we hear from you. So thank you all for coming out tonight.
Thank you all for a good turnout.
Councilmember Johnson. I want to mention it's never always time in council meetings. It's very important that you're here since you're aware of what's going on, such that you can help us make these decisions. This is all of our. Very important as far as. I want to thank all of you quickly. Thank you for the one who spoke about it. I know sometimes it's very intimidating. And I want to thank the council and the senior managers. For all the. Thank you.
Run by babies.